Very good evening, everybody. Now that we have a forum, we'll call the meeting to order. I ask everyone to please rise for a couple of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Nick, can we get two more seats up there for Mr. Plourd, his counsel? Two more minutes. Break by you guys like we did last time? Thank you, sir. And Mr. Plourd and counsel, if you could please, a little time forward. Welcome, gentlemen.
I can get this in here some more.
Just call the continuation of the public hearing to order at 6:04 PM.
Can you grab my phone, get away?
Sir. At the request of Mr. Plourd, you were not able to attend our last meeting. He, via email, entered the meeting as to continue, which we did this evening. Did you have any statements before we started?
I'm sorry?
Did you have any statements before we started?
Well, I don't know where we are on this as far as the hearing is concerned. There are some other things that I'd like to say with regard to the appeal. So if that's what you're asking me, then I'm happy to begin.
Is there any possibility to speak up for people?
Now, your condition is money, not speaking in a lot of words.
Sure. Well, I've had a lot of time to think about this since the last time we were here. And one of the things that I did do as well is I put together a letter, which I sent copies to the zoning board and to the board of selectmen. The letter was to Mr. Thomo. I don't know if the board's had a chance to look at that letter.
Never even received it.
The first thing I wanted to point out was that we spoke quite a bit about this motion for clarification, which was filed by the town after the court trial. And the town had asked for the judge to clarify this issue of what the town was saying was occasional use. And asked for an order that the judge ruled that the track could only be used occasionally, and that the judge set some standards for time and hours and things of that nature.
Which is what we attempted to do at our first meeting. And I'm assuming it was unsuccessful?
Well, the negotiation about a settlement, yeah, we weren't able to work anything out there. But what I'm getting back, and that's why we're here, obviously, but what I'm getting back at is that I pointed out that that motion was denied, that the court was not willing to acknowledge that the word "occasional" was used as part of the decision and that the track could only be used occasionally. And I know the town council, for some reason, indicated to you, because you asked a good question, you know, well, if this motion was already denied, why, you know, why are we here? And town council, for some reason, thought that that motion had been taken under advisement and that no action was taken on it. And that just wasn't true. And I provided a copy of the denial. That motion was denied. So in other words, we've already gone through this in court with a judge on whether or not what Mr. Plourd is doing is something that the judge has said he can't do, and the judge has denied that motion. I'd also point out, too, that if the town wanted to claim that Mr. Plourd was exceeding or had increased the activity on the property to the point where it was past what was grandfathered, they should have raised that issue the first time in the first cease and desist order. And that issue should have been litigated in court the first time. There's doctrine of collateral stop and raise judicata, which prevents litigants from coming back to court more than once to litigate claims that could have been litigated the first time around. So if the board were to deny Mr. Plourd's appeal and uphold the decision of the building inspector, we would simply go into court and say, Judge, you know, they've already had a chance to have this issue heard in the first litigation, and they chose not to. So they don't have the right to even issue a cease and desist at this point.
So in Mr. Thomo's literature to our board, he quotes from the court decision, and correct me if he's incorrect, "There is certainly a difference in the effect on the neighborhood of the occasional motocross rider practicing at the track and numerous commercial competitive races being hosted on the property." And it's not in quotes, I don't know if it's paraphrased or not, but the decision stated that the racing was not a pre-existing non-conforming use and granted the town a permanent injunction prohibiting the same. The court further held that the property could be used for limited motocross practice, explaining what I just quoted before.
But that's not what the court said. The court used the word "occasional motocross practicing" in comparing practice to racing and saying that practice is different from racing. And the fact that the motion for clarification, which was later denied, would substantiate that point. If the judge meant to say that, she could have very easily have clarified the issue or allowed the motion. She didn't allow the motion, she denied the motion, saying that that's not what I said.
So before town council summarizes what we're trying to say, our position through the town, I guess through counsel, Mr. Plourd, why, in my opinion, you should be here for a special permit as opposed to administrative appeal.
For what reason?
Based on our bylaws for non-conforming use.
Well, he's not a non-conforming use, he's a pre-existing non-conforming use which is allowed by law to continue.
And what we're reading as a board is that it was ruled that that function is not considered pre-existing non-conformant.
What function is that?
The motocross.
Well, we've got a court decision which says that it is.
Well, this is all we have in front of us, sir, so I guess it goes to town council.
Let me try to clarify a couple of things. With respect to this motion for clarification, in his opposition, the polling council invited us to actually serve a cease and desist order if we believed that the property owner was in fact exceeding the use. So the court denied it. The court didn't deny it and say, "It's not occasional." The court didn't deny it, it said "deny," period. With respect to council's claim that this res judicata, the thing has been decided, I think what's happening here is there's a fundamental misunderstanding as to what's going on here. A pre-existing non-conforming use, even a lawful one, doesn't entitle a property owner to carte blanche, do whatever you want. There is such a case where a use that was pre-existing, non-conforming, has expanded or changed so much so that it suddenly becomes unprotected. And in doing that, the courts have, in the powers, so-called powers case, which is, I'll give it to you, Powers versus the building inspector of Barnstable, the court has put together a test, a three-pronged test. Any one of these prongs is found to have been triggered, then the use has expanded to the point where it's no longer protected. And that's exactly what the zoning enforcement officer is saying here. With respect to this, what we are left with with the decision is to try to figure out what the court found was the baseline pre-existing non-conforming use. It's a cinch that the court absolutely found no commercial racing.
So in your opinion, the court decision states Mr. Plourd cannot have any commercial racing down there whatsoever?
I think, well, no commercial, no racing down there whatsoever. No commercial racing down there whatsoever.
So this is the fine line. Racing, I can practice down there. Commercial racing, I'm charging for that practice down there. Where are we at?
Well, I think there might be a difference between practice and racing. And this is what the property owner is trying to exploit here.
Well, I'm using the word "commercial." To me, "commercial" means charging for.
Sure, well, I mean, he's charging for so-called practice. I think fairly read that the court found that there was a difference in nature and kind from commercial racing to, and again, I'm going to go back to, the occasional motocross rider practicing at the track. In my opinion, fairly read, and you have a copy of the decision, fairly read, that decision basically says that the grandfathered use is the occasional practice rider. We have, we'll get the trial transcripts, so we'll see what the testimony was. But I can tell you, city, having tried that case, and I'm sure that these two can't, won't deny it, they may deny it or they may not remember, but when we get the transcripts, we'll hear it, is that nowhere was there testimony that they were allowing practice, I think it's Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Saturday, Sunday, from 10 to dusk. It's just, it wasn't, that's not the testimony. The testimony was that occasionally these guys, Mr. Wallace had a track out there, he had an old bulldozer, and he would take contributions to help maintain the track. Now, I've got here, from what I've pulled off the internet, not me, but from what the town has pulled off the internet, that shows that there is a significant amount of practicing going down there. The thing is, in all intents and purposes, it's a commercial, if giving him the benefit of the doubt, it's a commercial practice track. And under the so-called powers test, there are three prongs that the ZBA needs to take a look at. One of them is whether the use reflects the nature and purpose of the original use prevailing when the zoning bylaw took effect. For example, whether or not it's motocross riding. So again, we would have to go back to this court decision to determine what exactly was the nature and purpose of the original prevailing use when it came effect. I keep going back to that one line, "There is certainly a difference in the effect on the neighborhood of the occasional motocross rider practicing at the track." So to the extent that we can say it was motocross riding, he may be okay on that. But the other two are whether there's a difference in quality or character as well as the degree of the original use. If you look at this court decision, there is certainly a difference in the effect of the neighborhood of the occasional motocross rider. We have documentation that this thing is going on five days a week, eight, 10 hours a day. That, to me, and it's up to you, but that is...
My question now goes to the fact that I believe Mr. Thomo cited him for multiple businesses.
He did two things.
Yes.
He did the beyond, the so-called powers test, beyond, and whether or not there were, and I was going to get there, whether or not there are two businesses down there. I understand from Mr. Thomo that he actually runs a vending machine business out of there. He has a commercial practice track down there. He has a pro shop, and, you know, to the extent that he's got a bike wash and he allows people to come in and out of there and wash their bikes, you know, I don't know if that may be accessory to his track. But the fact of the matter is, there appears to be at least two businesses in violation of your zoning bylaw.
And the selectmen tried to nip this in the bud years ago with business licenses. Unfortunately, people that go to the town clerk, that poll, was it good for a year, three years, whatever, believe that they can operate a business, which that's not how it works. We have bylaws that are set up. Multiple businesses in that district are against our bylaws. And that's where we go back to trying to work this out over a month ago versus the special permit, which I believe you should be here for as opposed to the cease and desist.
Can I respond to that?
Yep.
There's always been two businesses there. I mentioned this the last time, and they're both, for that reason, it's grandfathered. Mr. Wallace ran a machine shop there, and he ran a track there.
Well, just because he's running it doesn't mean he's running it legally. The zone is...
But he was doing it before zoning came into effect, so it's grandfathered.
Well, Mr. Plourd's not running a machine shop, is he?
But it's a business, so it's still grandfathered.
I would disagree with that.
And isn't it, it's in commercial anyway, so he's allowed to do that, he doesn't need a permit, I think, isn't that a commercial property?
Uh huh.
It's in a commercial zone, so he doesn't need a permit to run a vending business there. And there's always been two businesses going on there, so there's no reason why he would need any other further permits at this point. The track is grandfathered, the vending is lawfully permitted under the zoning bylaws.
So it all boils down to occasional use?
Well, no, in my opinion, they would need to show that that second business was in fact grandfathered. That wasn't part of any court decision, that has never been, that determination has never been made. I think you correctly point out that running a woodworking business maybe, may not fall within the same type of business which would have the grandfathering, which would enjoy the grandfathering protections. We don't know if that woodworking business was in fact discontinued for more than two, for more than two years. That determination has never been made, and it is incumbent upon the applicant here, the appellant, to make that proof. And I don't see, in the information that I have, and I think I probably looked at every piece of paper the town has, I could be wrong, but I don't see that that determination has ever been made. And I don't see any denial that there isn't at least two businesses going on down there.
I really wish this could have been resolved. We've had over a month. It's not our fault, it's their fault.
Well, I...
So I'm going to open this up to the three other members, I'm done.
If I may, I think, Mr. Chairman, that if they're done presenting their side, I think that there should be some, at least evidence taken to support any decision that you may or may not make.
That who's going to enter, you or...
Well, I can do it on behalf of the zoning enforcement officer. First of all, I would like...
I do have some other things to say, you know.
Can he introduce evidence first?
I don't care what, you're, you know, you're in charge, you want, but I just, I don't want you to think that I don't have anything left to say or have any other witnesses.
Okay, the other thing I do want to mention is that apparently the clam box is down there providing food as well during these practices.
Well, they're not, because they were down there, and the board of health told them not to go down there anymore. So they're not.
So I'd like to present, this is a printout of...
Just by way of objection, this is all hearsay, this is not anything that's anybody's...
Where are we going to like come up with like a agreement or something?
They weren't able to work anything out.
No. Well, like I said, they...
Mr. Chairman, there is no such thing as rule of evidence, John.
Yeah, I'm entertaining everything.
This is the court decision. I think you have a copy of this, don't you?
This is what I wanted to see. Do you have this?
I don't, maybe you do. Feel free to look at it.
Here. There's another copy.
Actually, I do have...
And there's another copy. We can handle this.
Additionally, I do believe that there are at least some neighbors out there that wanted to provide testimony, and I don't know if any of them are, and I'm not going to co-opt your meaning, Mr. Chairman, but I believe that there are at least some neighbors out there that can speak to the frequency of the use of the track.
I think that's already been established.
Certainly through the written information I've provided you, there are hours out there.
Plus, we have testimony from our first meeting.
All right, so with respect to the so-called powers test, I already outlined two of them. The test is whether the use reflects the nature and purpose of the original use prevailing when the zoning bylaw took effect. Secondly, whether there's a difference in the quality or character as well as the degree of the principal, of the original use, and whether the current use is different in kind, worse in its effect on the neighborhood. I would suggest to you, if any, if the expansion of the use falls in any one of these criteria, the use is deemed to have changed and is not protected, subjecting it to the current zoning requirements. So I would, again, I would suggest to you that certainly with respect to prong number two, whether there's a difference in the quality or character as well as the degree of the original use. The original use, as I understand it from this court decision, was for the occasional motocross rider practicing at the track. Certainly, the information that you have before you is not occasional motocross rider practicing at the track, but rather a full-blown commercial practice track together with, at one time, catered food, a bike wash, a pro shop. So I would suggest to you that the evidence before you clearly shows that there is a significant difference. Three, whether the current use is different in kind or worse in its effect on the neighborhood. You can certainly, from the testimony that was provided to you at the first hearing, people are at their wits' end with the increase in noise, certainly an increase over the occasional motocross rider practicing at the track. With respect to whether or not there are two principal uses of the business, the fact that he's, that he maybe, even giving him the benefit of the doubt that he is in fact a pre-existing non-conforming use for the amount of what he's doing right now with his motocross, that is a principal use of the property together with a vending business out of there. That vending business and two principal uses of the property have never been, there's never been a legal determination as to whether or not that's pre-existing and non-conforming. And I will obviously reserve until the appellant is able to provide evidence, but I've seen no evidence that that is in fact true. So I would suggest to you that this board could make a determination that the current use of the property is an expansion such that it now requires him to come into compliance with zoning bylaw. And as you correctly pointed out in the beginning of this hearing, that would require a special permit to do what he's doing down there.
Members?
We're not a court of law, we can't decide who's talking about. We've got it, we've got it. Documents from the court.
We take all this into account for the appeal before us.
That say, the plaintiff can use the motocross track for practice. He can't use it for racing. She states in the back, he can use it for practice, he can't use it for racing. We're not here to apply occasional or anything like that. We're here to help him get other, other special permits to run his other entities that he wants to do.
But we're not, because when we started this, I made the statement that they're not here for a special permit. They're here strictly to appeal the cease and desist.
They are. My take line is, he's got permission from the court to run grassroots track. He can't race.
And we've been provided through counsel from Mr. Thomo, the zoning enforcement officer, that he's going above and beyond just practicing, he's doing the racing, which the court states he can't.
Wait a minute, there's nobody saying racing.
He can't decide how much practice he needs. She says he can practice, that's it. She doesn't say he can do it on one basis only. She doesn't say he has to do it after dark or something.
I agree with that as well. That's why I wanted to make this civil among the in-house.
It's pretty cut and dry, he can use it for practice. So if he's got other things going on, like a vending people staging out there, he should be instructed how to come to us and get special permit to have that additional use.
Which they've made the statement that they're unwilling to do because they believe they grandfathered. Again, Roger, what's before us is what Nick gave him, was that cease and desist, and he's appealing that. He's not applying for a special permit.
I realize that, but we should instruct him that maybe, you know, they could do it that way.
Which I tried to, and they made the statement that they grandfathered. And, yep.
I have to make so many statements. I think that the track is a great thing. I have a four-year-old niece who rides, I think it's great, but I also feel bad for people in the area. Like, is there anything you can do, like on the water side?
Why do you feel bad for her?
I mean, I live a quarter mile away. I don't hear a thing. I don't have any water near me or anything like that, the sound goes over. But if I lived in the backyard and I heard that all day, I'd probably be pretty...
Have you ever gone over there and listened to it?
No.
Okay, well, that's the problem, because what these people are claiming is unbearable noise is within the legal limits. If I can make an analogy, if you live on a road, the speed limit was 50, and you didn't like cars going by 50 miles an hour because you didn't think it was safe, and you started complaining about it, well, you don't have any grounds to complain, you're within the legal limits. Mr. Plourd is within the legal limits. And I understand that people don't like hearing that noise, but what he's doing is perfectly legal, and somebody's got to stand up.
But again, sir, what we're talking about is the multiple use of the property. Well, I think we keep drifting away from that. There's obviously sympathy from this entire board for both parties.
Yeah.
Here or there, we can go down every avenue with discussion. I'm a firm advocate for racing. I did it when I was a kid, I have a bike outside that I ride, and we talk about deaths on this track. Between you and I, I think that was inappropriate. I think it's sad, but it's a fact. I had a child coming to my classroom that died on a motorcycle, coming to my classroom. It doesn't mean I shut my doors down. So I sympathize with you, God bless you for having to bear that. But again, we're here for what Mr. Thomo gave your client.
Well, it's quite simple.
And you're claiming that it's grandfathered, the other use is.
Yeah, it's quite simple. I mean, it's, he's running a motocross track, he's running a vending company, the vending company is allowed by zoning, the motocross track is grandfathered, all these other things, like the bike wash and the showers and the pro shop, those are all part of having a motocross track. They're not a different business. He didn't open up a car dealership or something like that. People get done riding, they can take a shower, they don't get charged extra for it, it's an outdoor shower. They can wash their bike. If they break a lever or they have a bad, you know, a tire blows up, there's replacement parts. This gentleman is the only one that, tonight that I've heard from the town, that understands that, and I'm glad this is on film, Jeff's a friend of mine, and I know he's not going to like what I have to say, but hopefully we'll still be friends, because, you know, we both have our job to do, but he's leading you down the wrong path. The only decision that the judge made was, was that track grandfathered? Wasn't, you know, what kind of a grandfathering it was.
Again, sir, the only thing that we have before us is that cease and desist on multiple use of that property. Not how loud the track is, not what he can do, what the hours are, Mr. Thomo, and that's just arguments that we've made.
What is before you also is the expansion of that use, the expanded use of that track.
That's the multiple, well...
Well, it's two, it's two parts, it's multiple.
And that's Roger making the racing analogy versus a practice analogy.
Sure. And there is, there is, there is this so-called powers test. And to think that once a use is declared a pre-existing non-conforming use and heretofore you could never violate that, you just have to read the powers decision. It's clear that this is, the power decision in the 300 cases that follow it after that, that this is a matter of degree.
Courts are using it as case law.
Right, it's a matter of degree. And Jeff is not leading you down a path. What we need to do is we need to determine...
And I truly believe you'll still remain friends.
I'm still going to be friends, I'm friends with everybody.
A paycheck helps, though.
Yeah, what we need to do is we need to determine what the baseline was in the court's decision. And I've given you the decision, you've read it, I think it's a little less simplistic than, you can practice, you can't race. You read in there, and what the court found was, there is a difference in commercial racing versus the occasional motocross rider. So what she was saying was, it was occasional motocross practice there, you can't race. So therefore, the baseline was the occasional motocross practice rider. Here it's not.
Which you're not, you're not debating that you're racing, you're admitting that you're racing.
No, there's no racing. It's not practice, it's not racing at all.
So everything is presented online for advertising, and...
Yeah, I mean...
That's not racing?
That's not racing, no, it's practice. Racing would be a starting line, a race is a starting line with checkered flags, trophies, and all that other nonsense.
The same as any.
Yeah, NIMOC, any amount, any...
So nobody goes there and gets first, second, third, please?
What's a stimulon ride?
No. Stimulon, practice day is what it is.
What is it?
It's just a guy rents a track for the day and they just have practice, that's it.
They also sponsor races?
No, they do the Masters and Minis race, but they don't do that there.
Right, but they do... And that is part of the problem here, so I don't think Mr. Thomo ever went to the track, I don't think he spoke to Mr. Plourd before this.
I'm not allowed on the track, sir.
Well, you didn't ask to come down because you had a question about a zoning violation. If somebody has a legitimate reason to come down, I told the conservation commission, if there's a legitimate reason to come onto the property, you're going to be allowed. But to arbitrarily come onto the property is not... But to arbitrarily come onto the property is not allowed on anyone's property. I don't think anybody here wants the conservation commission coming on doing inspections just for the sake of doing inspections. But if somebody has a legitimate concern, they can call us, they can talk to us, and we'll address it. That was never done here. So a lot of these things, you're reading online and you're making assumptions like Jeff just did. And just so I can finish my one thought, okay? The original decision by the court was just simply to determine whether or not the track was grandfathered for motocross practice. And that's why the decision, as this gentleman has said a couple times, it just says plaintiff can use motocross track for practice. It doesn't say plaintiff can use motocross track for occasional practice. Because that wasn't what the court was deciding. The court was deciding, is that the grandfathered use? Now, the powers test is to determine whether there's been a change or a substantial expansion to that use, which is motocross practice. So in other words, if he was grandfathered for motocross practice, and now he decides, well you know what, I'm going to have motocross racing too. Well, that's a substantial change or alteration which you have to use the powers test for, and that's what the court did in its decision. They looked at the powers test to see if racing was a substantial extension or a change from practice. And she did say, yes, it is a change from practice. But it doesn't take away from the fact that that use, motocross, motocross riding on that property for practice is grandfathered. And there aren't any restrictions, because there never were any. And, you know, as long as he's within the laws for noise and dust and pollution, which he is, there's no limit on how much of that use can be done. I mean, you don't get to say, well, you can only, you know, be motocross riding on there, you know, this day and that day and the other day. It's a grandfathered use. And you have to stay within all of the other relevant laws and regulations, which he's doing. And that's the argument, that's the semantics.
Are you year-round?
No, I like to take some time off myself.
And you basically close when the sun goes down?
Yes, yes.
I did notice that there was a, in that packet of information, it talked about allowing studied, not-screw tires and-
That was a-
Snowmobiles.
Yeah, that never happened, though, that's the thing. I tried to get some snowmobiles down there when it was really deep, you know, when we had two feet of snow. No one showed, so I don't do it anymore, that's it. So, close the track down when it gets cold, and I don't open it up back till the spring. So I take the whole winter off, I take vacations, I enjoy myself. And I, once spring hits, I bust my butt and work.
I mean, these are kids, they're using it, it's seasonal, I, I don't know. To me, that's not a seasonal use. Even a season itself.
So Mr. Thomo, you're losing them, so-
No, I'm not losing anything, sir. The thing is, the board is obligated to follow the, fulfill zoning bylaws. That's what you guys are obligated to hold on. And it's very evident, according to my cease and desist, what it says and what he's doing. There is a violation, that's why we're here. I'm not making anything up.
And your claim for the violation for the record, Mr. Thomo, is what?
Well, accessory uses without a permit.
Which are?
The vending business. Expansion of the primary use.
Which is?
That's a violation of the court order.
What's the expansion?
He's using it year-round.
He said he wasn't using it year-round.
Um, excuse me.
During the, during the spring, summer and fall.
I think the court doesn't give enough detail. I think it's too bland for us to even, you can't go one way, you can't go the other.
I think-
It's so, it's so like minimal wording when it comes to occasional use, like, it's so minimal.
In order to find under the powers test.
Right.
And the court did go through that analysis, and I hope you've had a chance to read it. But in order to make its determination, it had to have found a baseline. And then from the baseline, it needed to determine whether or not commercial racing was a substantial increase, okay? And that's exactly what it did in the next to the last paragraph, when it said, there is a substantial increase in the nature and kind from the occasional motocross rider. So that's its baseline. The court determined that's the baseline, that's the protected use versus commercial racing. So we have a court determination that it's occasional motocross riding. Mr. Thomo has found that, through the evidence that we presented, that it occasional is now and again. We found now that it's five or six days a week, eight, nine hours a day. And your determination is, in my opinion, whether or not that is the occasional motocross riding.
I would-
Practice.
My opinion is if it was year-round, I think there would be a huge issue. But it's not year-round, so it's already right there, if you do it, to me, I don't know.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
Could I ask a procedural question?
Yes, you may.
For you to town council. I'm a little puzzled by the makeup of the people at the table, because I believe at least one of the members is an alternate, and we had a member here before who is not here this evening. I'm wondering what the process is, what the format is for the use of alternates, whether that has been formally established and an alternate is needed. I don't know, Mr. Simon, if you're an alternate.
Mr. Simon is now a full member, Chris Gulland-Davies is an alternate.
Okay, so you have three members, was he always a member?
Mr. Simon was-
Simon was a member in the course of the process of the multiple hearings this event. So I'm just, it's a question through you, Mr. Chairman, for town council about procedural, about who's sitting at the table and whether they are all generally sitting here.
I believe his questions are, in answer to another meeting, we are legal.
There are four members sitting here right now. I understand that this gentleman, and I'm sorry I don't know your name, was able to bring himself up to speed, as he can, from the first meeting by watching the videotape of the meeting. And he's taken all the necessary steps to allow him to do it under the so-called Mullins rule. So it's my understanding that there are four here.
Well, one's an alternate.
Doesn't matter.
Still an alternate, still an alternate.
There are four here. You need to uphold or to overturn a decision of the ZEO, you need four out of five members of a board.
I see.
Of a five-member board. So it's going to, it has to be unanimous to overturn him, or else it won't be overturned.
Thank you.
Tim? You have not spoken yet. Questions, comments?
Yeah, I'd like to know, what is the principal use of your property?
Well, there's two. There's two principal uses. There's the vending business, and there's the track.
Okay, I'll ask again. I'd like to know what the principal use is, not the two principal uses, the one principal use.
There is, there's two.
So you're claiming there's two principal uses. And so, how would you describe the two principal uses? Is one from non-conforming principal use from the past?
The track is.
And that's the track. And so what's the other principal use?
The vending.
Okay. And do you have any adults riding on the track?
Yes.
You do. And is it primarily adults that ride on the track?
I would say it's primarily.
It's a mix. There's kids, a lot of kids and adults.
What sort of mix?
Like 60/40.
Of?
60% adults, 40% kids.
Okay. So... There's a difference, this is the, something that the court said. There's a difference in quality or character and degree of use and the effect on the neighborhood between hosting races for children as opposed to adults in terms of possible hours of operation and the potential behavior of the participants and fans. There's a certainly a difference, well, he's talking about difference in effect. But it appears that the court is approving non-conforming previous use because there were schoolchildren there practicing on the track or in races. Hosting races of school-aged children, not adult competitors. So there's a difference in quality or character and degree of use and the effect on the neighborhood between hosting races for children as opposed to adults. So races aren't allowed, but you're saying that you don't have any races.
That's correct.
And Tim, I think he'd win in a court of law, that he's not having races. I think he's doing it, he's smart enough that he's doing it in a way that he can consider a practice.
There are, but in the cease and desist, there's that and there's the other parts of more non-conforming, more than those two principal uses.
That's where we get into it, I would ask that he comes for that special permit for the accessory uses and technically the vending machine, or the vending company. Roger's right, this last paragraph claims that he can have practice at that facility. And I think he's playing the game where he's legally not having races, he's practicing. But at the same time, I think Mr. Thomo is right, that there are accessory uses there that are prohibited by our bylaws. And this is why I wanted it resolved prior to having us make a decision.
How do we know there's not races there?
Which is all words, I mean, words, you don't know anything.
What makes you think that there are?
An association like NEMA, New England Motocross Association, somewhere like that, would be there in full force, and you'd have people coming in, the announcements and trophies and whatever. Those organizations are not there.
So that's your definition of a race?
My definition of a sanctioned race is you have somebody like NEMA or other several organizations.
I didn't say sanctioned.
Sanction meaning it's sponsored by NEMA, the New England Motocross Association.
I didn't say sanctioned.
I said sanctioned.
Yeah, okay.
Sanction means it's, you know, put on by them, he provides the place. It's not, it's not official race.
How do you know?
I know.
How do you know any more?
How do you know any more than what he's saying?
But it's also wording, again, it's all words, because kids could be practicing there and are they racing each other? Sure, probably, but they're practicing.
Yeah, in their minds, in their minds, they're racing in their mind.
It's racing, it's practice, what's the definition? So it's tough.
So occasional practice is a pretty strong word, although it's not well-defined, obviously.
We're not here to define occasional, we're not in court of law, we're not defining occasional.
You're not?
We're not defining occasional.
You're defining what a sanctioned race is.
They didn't say in their court finding that he could have occasional practice. They said he could have practice.
Roger, what's your opinion on the accessory use?
My opinion is, their principal use is a practice motocross track. They don't have a second use approved. The vending machine thing is, just because there was a woodworking shop there, doesn't mean they can say, oh, let's turn the woodworking shop into a vending machine company. Okay? My point is, their principal use is practice motocross track, cut and dry. If they want to have, stage a coffee vending provider out there, they should get a special permit to do that accessory use. If you think that they need to have a permit to sell parts when stuff breaks, then he needs a special permit to have a pro shop.
So you're making the same argument I'm making, and I'm making the argument for Mr. Thomo.
I'm making-
That we should deny this appeal and ask them, instead of going through a court of law, to come back before this board and file for a special permit.
Because there's two things that were decided on.
Because there's accessory use.
So you're-
If we were here for the primary-
You are saying that, Roger.
You are?
You are saying that.
What I'm saying is-
Is that we should deny the appeal.
I can get thrown away. They are-
But what's before us, Roger, is that cease and desist.
Yeah, I'm going against it.
But you just made the argument for.
Well-
It's because there's two things.
You just made the argument that they should be coming to us for a special permit.
I'm asking you what's before us.
So you're upholding what Mr. Thomo said in here.
What's before us is the multiple use of that property. I don't think anybody here disagrees with the use of that property, that he's within the letter of the law in regards to the motor track, in regards to the practices. They're going to win an appeal when it comes to occasional use on that. My opinion, but if it goes to an appeal on us granting Mr. Thomo his cease and desist and denying his, I believe we're going to win, because right here, we're all stating, they're stating that there's multiple use of that property. And our bylaw specifically states that he must come before this board for that special permit for that use.
Right.
So he was telling us that it's grandfathered. Is that, like, accurate? I mean, what grandfathered that woodworking shop to be any business?
Who the hell knows if there was a woodworking shop?
There was, there was.
Like, what?
That is-
I saw it myself.
It's whether or not it was there prior to-
I think I'm old enough to know about this one.
Whether or not it was there prior to the adoption of zone. Whether or not it continued in its use for, up to, continued in its use up till, I think it was 2013, when he bought the, when he bought the property, and if it didn't last within the two years. And whether or not it's the same basic nature and kind of business that is transferring over to. Now, my, it's not, it's not self-evident, they provided us with no evidence that that was grandfathered.
That's right.
No. And just so the board knows, there are two issues here. And I think that you could legitimately bifurcate, you could separate the two. One being, the cease and desist for use of the property for two primary uses, which, you know, from my understanding, sitting here, it sounds like you all agree that that cease and desist was proper. The other one is the expansion of the pre-existing non-conforming motocross track, which I think that's the one that's getting all the discussion from the board. But I think you could do two motions.
I was going to say, can't be the two, because-
For what?
Audience, for one.
You either prove it or you deny it.
Well, there are two, but they're, they told him the cease and desist for two different reasons. One, that it was an expansion of the motocross track. And two, you've got a second, you've got two primary uses, so stop one.
That could lead, well, it'd be three primary uses.
He's got more than two.
Very well could be.
It could be summed up into one.
I think he's four.
That expansion is another use of, above and beyond primary. It could be one motion. There's no need to money it up.
I see the issue being whether or not there's a motocross track there and whether or not there's a vending-
His court decision states he can have a motocross track.
Right. Exactly. But the court decision doesn't say you can have a vending machine business there too. Your bylaw says no.
Correct.
Okay, so that's the one. The second one is, and this is what the zoning enforcement officer is saying, is that the court decision says you can have a practice track with the occasional motocross rider. You've gone far beyond that.
The court does not say occasional at all. Plaintiff can use the motocross track for practice, nothing occasional about it.
Gary?
Occasional isn't a court decision, it's right here.
I think we've got to get away from the simplistic reading of this ruling, like, what we hear. It includes the plaintiff can use the motocross track for practice, like you just said, Roger. Because just prior to that, and as Jeff has said, further even, the court was persuaded that Wallace was still hosting races in 1988. Wallace was hosting races of school-aged children, not adult competitors. And there was a difference in quality of character and degree of use and the effect on the neighborhood between hosting races for children as opposed to adults in terms of possible hours of operation and potential behavior of the participants and fans. There is certainly a difference in the effect of the neighborhood on the occasional motocross rider, occasional motocross rider practicing at the track, and numerous commercial competitive races being hosted at the property. Now, the judge just didn't put that in there for the hell of it. The judge put it in there because that's the way she thought. And then she goes on to say, it includes the plaintiff can use the motocross track for practice. But her definition of practice is just what I just read. So it's, to me, it's obvious, you just can't say that, oh, like Mr. Purd's lawyer says, oh, well, we just won the case, and the plaintiff can use the motocross track for any damn thing he wants to use it for, which includes four-wheel racing and snowmobiles in the winter, and who knows how many motorcycles over there through the course of the weekend, Saturday, Sunday holidays and every other. So it's out of control, out of hand, and it needs to be stopped.
But Gary, the wording is exactly what you stated, that par- That paragraph sums it up. In conclusion, the plaintiff can use the motocross track for practice. Second sentence, the town has granted a permanent injunction prohibiting the use of track for racing. It states he can't use it for racing, but he can use it for practice.
Yeah, but on the other hand, he defines what her thought process is.
Oh, I get that.
Yeah, motocrosses become a big thing.
But again, we have, we have, we have bylaws for use in this town.
We don't have drag races here either.
There's a cease and desist before this board. I believe it. Beth?
I just want to also categorize one thing that it's really hard when you go to court that doesn't necessarily understand the rules of motorcycle racing. And to Mr. Mundell's point, if NEMA or the AMA, they were running sanctioned races there, they'd be obligated. Okay, the reason why Charlton doesn't have these type of fights around their professional track is their professional track properly permitted, okay, that considered their neighbors when established, instead of trying to slide under the wire with the grandfather clause. They run AMA races, they do pipe checks, they do...
But Beth, it's apples and oranges.
I'm just, I'm just trying to make the point that the language is very slippery from a standpoint of, oh, I'm just running practice. Well, by, oh, just running practice, it is a means to avoid the restrictions that even the entities that run those racing organizations would place on them to be good neighbors and good stewards of the environment and of the neighborhood.
I agree, but we're limited to what a court decision states.
I get it, but to go back to this...
But Charlton is a new entity that followed the new procedures with the new bylaws. This is a grandfathered case. It's apples and oranges.
I just want to finish what I'm saying. To Mr. Lincoln's point, the definition of that practicing is the old definition under the old scale of the track, which was local, okay? I'm certain that most of the people who live along that route can tell you how many out-of-state vehicles are coming to that track today compared to 1988. I bet you in 1988, when they were running the kids' tracks, it was all Massachusetts.
I see that. And all the parking lots on the Clay Box, it was totally...
Beth, I believe, I believe people agree with you, but what's before us is what the court's ordered, and that's what we have to stick with.
But to his point, you can't just look at the last paragraph, that whole section, okay, talks about defining it, talks about mostly kids, it talks about not 60, 70% adults, okay? It talks about a totally different scale of operation than what's there today.
I think we need to figure out how we're going to break up the motion.
But I, I want, I want one motion for what's on the table, is the administrative appeal on the zoning enforcement officers' cease and desist. That's what's before us. Yes, sir?
I'm Tim Dugis. I am the manager of the Clay Box. I spoke with a few of you guys earlier today. I don't have much to say. I'm not a motocross driver. Yes, as they pointed out earlier, Dan and I tried to do something, so me coming back as a new manager of the Clay Box could improve sales and in turn make my family a little money, and my girls can go to gymnastics class and things like that. But, you know, for me, I think it's ridiculous that we don't invite people from anywhere to come to our town. There's a lot to be benefited. I personally have hired and held three full-time positions more than last year at the Clay Box. A lot has to do with the changes we've been working on and moving towards a better restaurant, but some has to do with having a great view, okay? And sometimes we all need to just sit back and think about what we're complaining about. Honestly, dirt bike riding, kids going and practicing, let's just buy video games and sit in front of a TV. That's all I have to say. I have to go run a business. I really hope that you guys can really think this through. This is 2018. We're here because we all care about it. I'm sure there's something we can do. I'm sure every single one of us can come together, figure out a solution that works for everybody. But the bottom line is, look at all the closed-down businesses in our town. Where are we going? My kids need a future here, and I'd appreciate if you guys would think about others before yourselves sometimes, and maybe in return, farmer will treat you nice. Thank you.
I had a quite good experience in the past, anyway, with zoning my ward. The fact that he has a practice course, if anybody who's a bike enthusiast or has a kid that's a bike enthusiast or has a friend, practicing is what they do. They live for riding. Why they're doing that, they're not out to want opiates because they tricking, can't OD and be riding a bike. They want to be nodding off. They might smoke a little weed, that's it. The fact that people act like this... You're complaining about noise there, you live on the lake. How many times have you heard people racing their boats up and down the lake? Or in the wintertime, they're saying that he's making noise in the wintertime. You can go on any of that lake property that everybody's running their freaking, their summer games. They race all this, right around the lake, ice fisherman. It's just putting out something that somebody did. The previous time, when the track got shut down, because I had purchased sales on that same piece of property, that the town told me, there's no way, they're not letting anybody in there to do it. This guy at least had a deep enough pocket and maybe can read better than me and was able to fight with you guys to make it happen. And it's a shame that you guys push people out of town. I have business in town, I own four houses myself. You guys have chased me out, I wouldn't want to do a damn thing for this town. It's horrible.
Absolutely.
And there was no license even available for what they pushed me out. And in the first pass meeting, they had a girl come in here complaining that I had to jump car down Mill Street. You guys were all on hope, send the zoning guys, send the cops. When you found it wasn't me, it was dropped. Amazing.
We're talking about this, Beth?
Yeah, I was pointing out in your head, huh? This four guys on the block.
Was there someone over here? Was it Linda?
Look, Mr. Dugis is gone now, but he was promoting on his sign, he was supporting it, and I will never go to that Clay Box again because of him supporting it. And there's people, they say it's just for kids. They're coming up, they're coming there from everywhere. They're coming from all out of state, and they're not children, they're adults. And so of course he's advertising this. He said, why were people from New Jersey, New York, Connecticut, Rhode Island, why are they coming there? Because it's advertising as a racetrack, and that's what they're doing. And they said, why, we don't go down there? Because we can't go down there because he hasn't posted. And I'm talking as a resident of Quay Bog Street, not as a sock in the hair.
Surface. Yes.
I think you follow up on what Beth was saying about some of the regulated tracks. One of the issues that I've noticed is there a great deal of difference in noise levels between what machines are running down there. Sometimes you'll have a group down there racing and you'll hardly hear them. Not bad at all. And then all of a sudden, you hear another one fire up and it's very loud. I think, I think it's a good neighbor. Somebody should do some enforcement on noise levels. There's no need to this. You know, you take farm tractors years ago made a lot of noise. You don't even hear them running today. It's no different with bikes. I'm not a biker, but I think those of you that are and know something about it, they change the pipes and the mufflers because the kids don't have a little more power supposedly. Now, maybe they ought to thank their neighbors when they do some of this stuff, and you wouldn't be here tonight.
Thank you, Sharon, right? Last word?
I just have to point out, as chair of the planning board, Mr. Hammond came before a special permit, and he was turned down. He could have appealed the permit. Decision, can he do not? So we're going to come here and complain about being unfairly treated is neither relevant to this discussion nor truthful.
All right. So back to the board discussion. So, so again, I believe it's a one-motion vote to either accept his appeal, administrative appeal, or deny his administrative appeal. Are we okay with that?
So when he comes back to...
I don't think he's coming, I don't think he's coming back. I think this, I think this is going to cost the town more money. I would have loved to have worked this out a month and a half ago, like we tried to. There's no doubt in my mind, you and I, could work it out and do it in less than a week. And it'd be a win-win for the town, but there's no communication, there's no nothing. I don't get any of it.
May I just say one thing?
Yep.
You know, you used the word earlier, you know, Mr. Plord is, you know, playing the game, and I know you didn't, I'm trying to say how you meant it, but all Mr. Plord is doing is what he's legally entitled to do. I've looked at this 10 different ways, and I feel completely confident in giving him the advice that I've given him. And before you vote, think about one thing, okay? He's been there since 2013. That is vending business, that is track, he's been running it the same way. He did add showers, and he did add the pro shop, and everything else has been the same since 2013. And don't you think that if there was some reason that what he was doing was illegal, town council could have gone to court and got some sort of a stop order? You don't have to wait for this to be appealed. Once the cease and desist was issued by Mr. Simeon, town could have gone to court and got an injunction.
Did Gary order one?
No, and they haven't here either because they're going to get laughed out of court. They're afraid to because it's so ridiculous what they're trying to sell to you. They'll never sell to a judge. And I'm glad this is on video because if you deny this, he's going to make a lot of money, I'm going to make a lot of money, he's going to make a lot of money, and these people are going to pay a lot of money. And I'm glad it's on video, so two or three years from now, we'll have this tape, and you had your chance.
Tim? Yep? Yep?
So when you're running the track, considering seven days a week and I assume only daylight hours, and there's Saturdays and Sundays, how many people at a time are you on the track?
It depends. It's all different.
Well, give me some idea of this. Dependances, you can flesh it out a little bit.
That's, I mean, I don't have numbers. I don't want to...
What's the most that you have on the track at one time?
We don't have more than 30 bikes on the track at one time. Because if you have more than 30 bikes on the track at one time, it becomes too dangerous.
Do you approach that very often?
I do. Not very often, no. Like during the week, it's very, very slow. We get two bikes till 20 during the week.
And on the weekends, is it busier?
Yeah, because no one works. Everybody wants to go out on weekends and have fun. Don't you want to go out on weekends and have fun and do what you enjoy? Go fishing, go hiking, go whatever you want to do? No one's telling you what to do on the weekends that you can't go hiking or go fishing and all that. So I feel that, you know, people have the right to do what they want to do on the weekends and enjoy their activities that they like to do.
But again, this goes to the secondary use. I believe it violates our bylaws. I believe if you came for a special permit, it'd be a totally different story as opposed to what's before us today, that administrative appeal. Do you have any comments, questions?
Yeah, so on the Saturdays and Sundays, you approach, you can approach the 30 people on the track and you limit it to that because of safety considerations?
So I'm going to, based on the secondary use, that to me, that's what it all comes down to, the accessory use. Mr. Mundell made the argument as well. I'm going to entertain a motion to deny Mr. Plord's administrative appeal. Do I have a motion?
I make that motion.
Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
Can I clarify something first?
Most certainly.
If we deny his appeal...
Yep.
Does he have to stop his practice racing?
No.
He can continue practicing.
My belief, yes. He's got a court...
Did you say racing?
Well, practice. I believe this court order allows him to practice.
Well, not to, not to the extent that he is.
The secondary use, the showers...
Well, no.
Yeah, I mean, he extended.
The expanded use.
That's why I said...
There's testimony during that hearing that he had five bikes on the track. You just heard third.
We can't tell him operating hours through this, through this hearing.
Can't tell him. Maybe, you can, you can make a determination that he has gone beyond the grandfather use, which would require him then to come in to you and come into compliance with the zoning bylaws.
I believe just by this motion, that does a...
I mean, you're essentially, if you're denying his appeal, there's two issues there. You're denying the entire appeal.
Which is that he's only appealing Mr. Thomo's cease and desist.
That's right.
He's not systematically, he's not picking it apart. It's just one appeal.
Yep.
So this motion...
You deny it, then, and just so that you know, I mean...
We can't, we can't tell him what the court's already told him. That's, that's an argument in court of what his operating hours are and the definition of occasional use is. Thus, the desire to work this out before we made this decision to cease and desist.
But you can make the determination that he, and that's what you would be doing by this, that he has, that he has gone beyond both grandfather.
I'm not, I'm not putting that out there. I have he said, she said.
So basically, the above and beyond, we have to get past the point that it's not, what we're considering the above and beyond is just the second business. That's what we're hoping to rule here, but...
We're talking second...
Second and third, yeah.
Well, second and third, yeah. But we don't want to go to the primary, which everybody is arguing about, but that's not the issue.
Which has already been dealt with.
Which has already been dealt with. So the decision we made today is not based upon that, so nobody can get angry over that.
It's based on the appeal.
It's based on the fact that...
Of what's before us.
Right.
The appeal that was presented to us.
On the two other businesses.
Too much on the plate.
It's too much...
So we, so we, yes, sir?
There are two issues before you, and unfortunately, I don't think that you can dodge that secondly. You can break up the motion and say that I move to deny the appeal with respect to the use of the property for two primary uses.
The application states nature of appeal, decision of zoning enforcement officer, period.
Right.
Nature of request, of relief request, overturn the decision and ruling.
Right.
We're not...
But, but in the decision, there's two different bases for his, for the, I striked that, for the cease and desist, there's two different bases. One of them is you have, you've got two principal businesses. The other one is that you've expanded the non-conforming use that you had is protected such that now you need to come into compliance with zoning. The first one, I think that you guys are prepared to make a decision on, but there is a second one. And in my opinion, if you just approve or deny his appeal, you're denying it on both.
As a whole.
As a whole.
So, so the order to Mr. Plord was, dear Mr. Plord, you are hereby ordered to cease and desist from your use of the property located at 5 Quay Bog Street, Brookfield, Massachusetts, the property for commercial purposes, including but not limited to competitive adult motocross racing and/or practicing, as well as retail sales. Specifically, the property is located in the town's Business B, BB, and Flood Plain zoning districts. The motocross track portion of the property lies within the FP district, which is the Flood Plain, where the above-described current commercial use of the property is not allowed. It's been grandfathered to be allowed.
So then you go to the second page, and it goes on further. You are well aware, the use of the property has been the subject of recent litigation. The district court considered whether the certain users were protected. On February 26th, the court issued a memorandum. The court further held that there is, that the court further held the property could be used for limited motocross practice. And then we go on to say here that, I understand, however, that you continue to use the property for more than occasional motocross practicing and have been advertising memberships and regularly occurring commercial practice times for adults and even a MotoX Academy, which exceeds the scope of the allowed use of the property and is no longer a protected pre-existing non-conforming use. So those are the two issues before you. May I ask a question?
Can you give me one second? I'm just writing out what I'm, what's in my mind. So Jeff, I'd like to get this in one motion. So my thoughts is entertaining a motion to continue occasional use for practice as described in court finding and deny administrative appeal for operation of accessory secondary uses on said property.
I think, Ed, you run into the same problem of having the zoning enforcement officer having to...
having to define...
It's not our fault that it wasn't defined.
You can do that, but I, but you're going to be right back here. I'm not, I'm going to, at that point, I'll have to obviously confer with the town, but it's likely if they want to stop it, we'll be in there.
So, no disrespect to you or two of the selectmen that are here, but what the hell have you been doing for a month and a half?
Would you like me to read the email that I got when I asked for a counter to the court, to the entire public?
I have not been in this...
They did not, they did not want to entertain you. They call us ignorant, they call us a variety of other things in that email that I didn't...
There's nothing about ignorance.
Oh, really?
I read it. Yes, it was.
It didn't say ignorant.
That word was in there.
What, how are we supposed to know when we can use the track? Like what days and what hours?
I wasn't privy to this, which, which is amazing to me as well.
Where is the word ignorant?
I'll give it to you whenever you're ready.
Call the neighbors ignorant, not anybody on the board.
Just the neighbors over here? All those people behind you?
I didn't call any of these people, but they are.
Was it ever established that there are two principal uses?
I didn't call, I called the name. I didn't call you. I didn't call the...
What am I going to do? Have the place with the principal uses?
The fourth order.
I'm just going to say, oh, my goodness. Let you know, do you know the...
So, the property, parent, principal, use.
By, by law, it's controlled, not the female.
Well, not exactly.
I'm just saying, you know, he would say you get a couple of...
The second...
And you can't credit father or you show transferred to...
And who knows? Those are different deals. So, so they're, they are allowing two principal uses, which is... Two, three, four, depending on how many, bring yours, showers, the...
Guys, we're still in a meeting here, please. Thank you.
So, you can say what you want. But we don't, well, we haven't established that there is...
I don't, I don't think it's, I don't think it's the board's discretion to limit his hours.
No.
He's not coming here for a special permit, that's where we would.
Right.
That's why I want to keep it in one motion. I'm up for recommendations, Jeff. You're the one recommending.
Yeah, I am recommending two motions, because I believe there are two different issues here. I mean, you could certainly just deny it or move to deny it, and if you get four votes to deny, or if you, well, no, strike that. If you, if you, if you don't get, in order for, it would probably be a better motion to say, "I move to uphold the cease and desist order." And if you don't get four people in favor of, 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 of holding it, or, strike that.
Well, you need three people.
No, you need four.
Unanimous.
You need unanimous to make the...
No, to deny.
To overturn.
To overturn it, yeah.
You need four.
Yeah, to overturn. But you meant, you meant, he's just playing devil's advocate.
He's saying get a motion to allow the appeal.
Yep, to prove the appeal, yeah. You need the four, I'm aware of that, yeah.
So, what's another way of getting through this?
So, if you don't have the four, but what I'm saying is, there are two, there are two issues here. And it would be, if you deny his appeal, if three of you want to grant his appeal and one doesn't, it's a deny.
He wouldn't get it.
He wouldn't get it.
Correct.
We would go to court, and it would essentially be for both, for both issues. Or you could break it up.
And wording on that?
I move to grant the property owner's appeal regarding the two principal uses of the property located at 5 Quay Bog Street.
Our bylaws strictly prohibit that. That's why we're here.
Right, and then if you...
He needs a special permit for that. That's why we're here.
Right, and if you vote, if everybody votes no...
But we're not here for a special permit tonight. We're here for the cease and desist, the administrative appeal.
But one of the issues is whether or not he can have a principal use of the property, or two principal uses.
There's no such thing as two principal uses there. One principal use, and that's it.
The court, he can have...
That's what they call it, a principal use.
And the court's established that he can have that.
That's true.
We're here for his accessory uses.
But the principal use included in the decision, we not use that property.
So, so they can argue this as much as they want. Are you okay with a motion to continue occasional use for practice as described in the court findings and to deny the administrative appeal for operation of accessory secondary uses on said property?
Define occasional.
That's not, but that's not okay.
But that's, that's, but that's what it's referenced to the court finding.
That's, that's different, a whole nother wrong end.
And that's not for us to argue, but, but we put it in there because that's what we're basing this on. Allowing him not just carte blanche, saying he can't do anything.
Right.
Which that other motion that Tim made, but wasn't seconded, so it's not on the table, went towards.
What do you want to get?
Huh?
Read it again.
I want again?
I said, read it again.
Entertain a motion to continue occasional use for practice as described in court findings, in the court finding, and deny the administrative appeal for operation of accessory secondary uses on said property. What about the expansion of the primary use? But, but, but that, that, that first sentence covers it.
Yeah.
As defined by the court, occasional use for practice.
Mr. Chairman, you know we're going to go to court.
I know we are, that's why I'm trying to make it simple.
No, you can't make it simple.
I'm trying, I'm trying.
We'll see him in court, because that's what it's going to end up. I know it, and you know it.
But you can, you can come before us for a special permit and alleviate all that.
Okay, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, yes, sir.
Just a correction, it's the planning board that they need to go before, not the ZB. Just to let you know.
Okay.
Well, the problem is that we have no guarantee that we're going to get the permit, and we don't think we have to. We'll just go to court and have a judge do the...
And that's, that's a... So, are we okay with the motion?
I am, yeah.
Tim?
Yeah.
If that motion allows him to practice...
It's, it's black and white. So, so who's making the motion? I did, I entertained the motion.
Okay, I make the motion.
Would you read the motion that...
Mr. Chairman?
Let's read it one more time.
Yeah, read it.
Yes, sir.
I don't have a problem with your motion, but I really think you need to define occasional.
We can't, we can't.
But that's not what we're, that's not what we're...
We, I, I attempted to do that a month and a half ago. It, it didn't happen. We're here where we're here, we're at.
And he needs to go to court.
So, the motion, the motion that I'm entertaining, please, people, entertaining a motion to continue, to allow Mr. Plourd to continue occasional use for practice as described in the court finding and deny the administrative appeal for operation of accessory secondary uses on said property. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? Roger's going to second it. Do we have discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? You're opposed?
Yes.
You're opposed? So, Tim is a no vote, the vote carries. Thank you, thank you, gentlemen, thank you all.
Just, the, the appeal fails.
What's that?
The appeal, the appeal fails.
Correct.
Three to one.
They appealed my appeal, I mean, they appealed my decision to appeal.
The motion, to me, carries, and his appeal, the motion in it states that we're not accepting it, we're denying it, so his most, his appeal does fail through the motion. The motion, the motion carries.
He just said, no, he said something totally different.
Well, I think practically speaking, it has the same effect, that, that his appeal of the cease and desist fails.
Fails. This, this motion carries. The motion is to deny the appeal.
Yeah.
Okay. So, what is this, so he gets to run his...
As defined by this...
And he can run his other businesses.
Right, no.
No.
She tells...
No. I want you to understand as well, Dan, what's up?
I, I owned a vending business in this town for fifteen years, so...
You good?
Yeah.
Thank you. So, I'm going to entertain a motion to... So, don't, don't leave, we're not ending the meeting. Just entertain a motion to adjourn the appeal by the hearing.
That's why I haven't told you. You told him to...
Do I have motion to adjourn hearing? All in favor? Tim, you okay with ending the, Tim, you okay with ending the hearing?
No, we have a question. We have a, I, we have a question, so... The appeal, the appeal failed.
You know that, right? But his appeal failed.
His, that's, that was the motion.
I know. I think he mistakenly voted against, he wanted the appeal to fail. He mistakenly voted, but I think everybody's left, so it has the same practical effect.
It's still denied. His appeal is still...
And the cease and desist trade.
Yes. For, for the secondary use. For, for the, for the...
The extra uses.
Correct.
I think it is failed.
Yes.
Period, or period.
I'm not here right now.
Yeah, I know, we have some... So, you're, you're right, he can operate his motocross.
He can't operate it in excess of, I mean, essentially, but...
Well, it's excess of, it's, there's no termination.
Yeah, we're, we're good.
We're good. We're going to go to court anyways.
Okay, good.
All in favor?
So, we're enjoying what the hearing, have we? Tim, have you, one second? Are you going to stick around, Jeff?
Just a second. I'll stick around.
Well, we're not done with the meeting. Tim, so I'm going to entertain a motion to approve the four sets of minutes that were presented.
Yes.
Do we have a motion?
Yes, we have. That we accept the minutes, the four minutes.
Do we have a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Do we have a motion to adjourn at 7:46?
Make that motion, adjourn.
Thirty-second? All in favor? Aye. Thank you, everyone.
Good.